Note for the record that all council members are present except Mayor Conway, who can't join us this evening.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda? Any additions, changes?
Yes, I would like to remove the item regarding, consider approval of Resolution Number 2014-38 authorizing the private party reimbursement of $33,070.38. Because as I understand, our mayor was involved in this issue and since he's not present, I'd like him to be present for the discussions and would suggest deferring it to the next available meeting.
So you'd like to reschedule Item B?
Correct, Item B, under New Business.
And then also, under presentation, Item B, the presentation by the Half Moon Bay City Council, I understand they are not able to make it tonight, so we will want to reschedule that when they are available? Any other changes?
There had been a discussion with Councilmember Lentz about moving the Economic Development Workshop item up earlier on the agenda. There is a desire to have one of our staff members, Caroline, do a short presentation with regards to some social media ideas that Cliff and I had talked about. She's unfortunately not here at the moment, she's caught in traffic, but she should be here soon, but I think maybe after your presentations, well, her presentation is just the attorney, but soon, soon after that, the agenda, maybe after...
Perhaps after Consent Calendar?
After Consent, hopefully she'll be here, and if not, then maybe have it rolling. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, hopping it up there.
Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Which brings us to the presentation, the introduction of our new city attorney, Michael Rousch. And welcome, Michael. Do you want to step forward and say a few words, or stay where you are?
Well, council, thank you very much. Of course, I was here at the last council meeting and had a chance to introduce myself to the council at that time. I don't think I need to repeat much of what I said at that time. I'm certainly glad to be here with you and with the community and look forward to working with you on all your very interesting topics that you have going on in this community. So, thank you for considering me and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Michael, and we look forward to a long relationship with you also. Thank you. Any comments? Brings us to Oral Communications, Number One, and I have a slip from Michael Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and City Council. My name is Michael Barnes and I'm a Brisbane resident. In 2006, I persuaded two of my colleagues on the City Council to join me and accept a generous offer of, I think it was $6,000, for materials and free labor to build a half-pipe in the skate park. Joel Diaz is the generous citizen who made that offer, and since 2006, this skate park has benefited from the half-pipe. The half-pipe is the piece of equipment on the side of which it says Brisbane with a skater doing an ollie. Then in 2009, while I was still on the City Council, I asked the Park and Rec Commission if the skate park in its present location was a good permanent use, and they reviewed that, and the answer came back, yes, the skate park in its present location is a, would be a good permanent use. Then in December of 2010, the City Council had asked for public input on what to do with $50,000 left over from Frank and May Walsh that was being held by the Seton Medical So in December of 2010, an 11-year-old skater testified at a Park and Rec Commission meeting saying that that money should be spent on a concrete skate park. That was the public process. Nobody else had any input, the City Council didn't know what to do with the money, but skaters stood up and participated, and they participated in subsequent meetings as well, all the time participating in the public city process on what to do with that money. The skaters, these pre-teen and teen skaters, have testified at six council or Park and Rec Commission meetings in all that time. These are teenage boys who didn't just come to meetings and listen and watch, but actually participated in their city government, and the whole time, they were respectful, well-spoken, and thoughtful. They really are experts at skate parks. So, they persuaded you, the City Council of Brisbane, in December of last year to adopt this process by which a skate park hopefully will get built. So in December, it was approved, and there are 15 steps in this process, and we made it to about step six and a half before this process changed. Now, the skaters have been through this once before with the Frank and May Walsh money or the Seton held, they participated in the public process, and then all of a sudden, that process changed, and it went private, and the money went elsewhere. And the same thing seems to be happening now. This public process of 15 steps that you approved in December now has a new step in it, and that new step has been going on for the last two months. There's actually been no progress on the skate park design process whatsoever because the location of the skate park is now being reevaluated. That is not anywhere in this process that the council adopted in December. The skate park location reappraisal is not in the RFP that you issued, which I have right here. There is no mention of a new skate park site or exploration of a skate park site. It is not in Spawn Ranch's proposal for the skate park, it's not in their scope of work to look for a new skate park site, and it's not in the agreement for professional services that the city issued when they hired Spawn Ranch. So this new step in the process means that this doesn't mean anything anymore. The skaters have been waiting for two months to find out what happened to their input, and I can't tell them because nothing's happened. And now it sounds like there's going to be at least one more month where nothing happens. And it's not part of your process, it's a failure of the system. It's a real problem. The skaters, you know, you've had these pre-teens and teens come and testify, they have held up their end of the bargain, they've participated, they have followed the rules, and the lesson they're learning now is that following the rules doesn't matter. You know, you can follow the rules and testify and participate, but the rules change, and, well, too bad. I don't think that's the lesson we want to teach the skaters, I don't think that's the lesson that you want these kids to learn, but it's the lesson that they're getting. And all you have to do to change that is say yes to the skate park, is to say, let's design it for its present location, let's not go off on this unplanned excursion to new locations, let's just get it done.
Michael?
Yes?
Can you wrap it up, please?
So, I think the community also supports this project. I've sold 90 T-shirts that say Brisbane across the front of them, the Brisbane that comes directly off the half-pipe, the Brisbane that was painted by skaters. Everyone seems to really like these T-shirts, it gives them a pride of place, it's a touchstone that they see every night when they come home, and they're putting their monies, their money where their mouth is, they're supporting the skate park with their hard-earned dollars. I've got orders for another 20 shirts, I expect to sell more shirts at the community festival, and all of that, that money, well, $10 every shirt, is going to come to the city. I already have a check for $1,000 that I was planning to give you tonight. $1,000, I've made $1,000, $10 per shirt, and people are giving more than $10 per shirt, some people are paying $20 for a shirt and saying, it's going to a good cause, it's going to the skate park, we like that. But because the process has been derailed, because I don't have confidence that we're actually going to see progress on the skate park, I'm going to hold on to this check until I see the city actually make progress in designing the skate park, following your December 23rd, 2013 process. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bernardo?
You want to have, before Mr. Bernardo gets up, you want to have any response to that, or ask any staff for any explanation, or you just want to let it go? What is your preference?
Well, I think that...
Because I'm happy to respond, since I'm a member of the committee.
If you'd like to make a response, then it's not really a discussion item, and if you'd like to give us some insight...
Just for, I think it's, I mean, he makes a good argument and deserves a response. I'm just speaking for myself now, as far as I'm concerned, and you already know this, I still am very much in sync with the approved process that you demonstrated in the graphics that was put together by Stuart Schillinger, and I'm fully in agreement with that personally. And we, I think we're actually going to move ahead in that process this past Tuesday, and was the meeting to which you were invited, and I think we're planning to come, and then of course, there are two members in the council side of the facility Subcommittee, Mayor Conway and myself, and as we all know, Mayor Conway is, you know, seriously ill, very seriously ill, in intensive care, so we're not talking about, you know, a little cold or something. And that's why it was decided to postpone the meeting until he's, you know, able to perform. And so, I mean, from my point of view, that's the only delay that's happened within the recent time that I'm aware of, and I'm hoping that as soon as Clark is well, we're going to move ahead and follow the process. That's how I see it, anyway. I don't know, does staff have a different, have I got that right?
Yeah, I would hope that we would have the item on a council agenda, basically on the October 16th agenda, but that, of course, is contingent upon the mayor's being able to get back to good health, and the Subcommittee, I think, is poised to have a discussion about the issue of location and moving the project forward, and that would most likely end up with a committee recommendation to the full council, and I anticipate that coming forward on October 16th. It would have been on October 2nd had Mayor Conway not fallen ill, but that's, you know, we're just trying to work around that at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Bernardo?
Mayor Protam, Council, good evening. My name is Robert Bernardo, and it's my pleasure to serve as a Commissioner for the San Mateo County Harbor Commission, and tonight, I just want to basically introduce myself and also offer myself as a resource to the citizens of Brisbane, and also give you an update of what's going on at the Harbor District, very briefly. So as you probably realize, the Harbor District has countywide jurisdiction because we have two public harbors, one located here in South San Francisco at Oyster Point Marina, and the other at Pillar Point Harbor in, near Half Moon Bay. And, you know, why is that important to everybody? Because all of our property taxes help support the Harbor District. Forty percent of our budget is paid for by property taxes, and the other 60% are through our activities and businesses, through our tenants. So, a couple of updates for you. One, we're on track to paying down our debt, which is something we're really proud of. We will be debt-free by 2017, which is a full year ahead of schedule, which is something that we had planned out years ago, since we incurred the debt. Number two, we recently designated both harbors, well, the state designated both harbors as clean marinas for our environmental and sustainability efforts. It's the first for us in our history, so both harbors are designated clean marinas on the environmental front. And in terms of harbor safety, on the safety front, we recently received an award from the Harbor Masters and Port Captains, another statewide body, for our over 100 search and rescues every year that we do, and the lives that we save. And then finally, one of the most exciting things that we've just launched recently is we are having a strategic business plan, a first-ever strategic business plan where we will create a blueprint for the future of both harbors, and it's really exciting because this is the first time that we're really, you know, putting lots of thought into public input and bringing the community together to come up with ideas and solutions, and not just to have the policymakers come up with all of the ideas and solutions. So, that's a little bit about what's happening right now at our harbors. Of course, Oyster Point is known for its leisure boating facilities, and then Pillar Point is known for our commercial fishing, and also the annual Mavericks Surf Competition, International Surf Competition. So those are just some of the things that we do and some of the accomplishments we've had, and things to look forward to in the coming year, and I'd like to offer myself as a resource to the residents of Brisbane. I live in South San Francisco, and I've lived there for over 35 years. I have family who live in Brisbane, so I'm very happy to be here tonight, and my phone number, for those who have any questions, my home number is 650-794-1810, and please use me as a resource if you have any questions. And in the days to come, we will come back to you with ways in which Brisbane residents can get involved in our strategic planning process. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, really great work you did, Robert.
So that moves us to the Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move Approval?
A through C?
Second.
Before we do that, I did have a minor edit to the City Council minutes of July 17th, and so I'd like to pull those from the Consent Calendar.
Okay, so Item A you'd like to pull?
Item A.
And so a motion for B through C?
Yeah, I already made it.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Laurie, your comments on Item A, the minutes of July 17th?
So on page three of the minutes, actually, let me grab those. I communicated the minutes, the edits to Sherry, if she has them handy.
I wondered if on page three, there was one word that was...
Oh, here it is, I do have it in front of me, I got confused thinking it was the agenda for tonight. So on page three, at the top, on the first line, it says prior there fiscal years, and it should, it's just a typo, there should be three, as in prior three fiscal years. That's on the first line of page three of the July 17th agenda, I'm sorry, of the, it says July 17th Agenda, yes.
On the top of the page, yes.
On the top of that page, it should be the minutes.
The minutes.
That's why I'm getting confused.
Any other changes?
No, that's it.
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 17th, 2014, with that edit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that brings us to public hearing, and to introduce Ordinance 588 to amend the Brisbane Municipal Code, Title 15, to establish an Art in Public Places program and establish contribution requirements for new development and to create a public arts fund. Staff report?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. In November of 2012, the City Council directed the Park and Recreation Commission to develop an ordinance to provide a funding method for public art. The commission created a Subcommittee, worked over the course of 2013, and unanimously recommended for approval, an ordinance for your consideration. Some of the key provisions include, you know, one is a funding component, that private, non-residential projects with development costs exceeding $1 million are required to contribute at least 1% of their development costs into the Brisbane Public Art Fund. Projects exceeding $5 million in cost have the same requirement, however, they also have the option of devoting 1% to onsite publicly accessible art in lieu of contributing to the public art fund, so that's one key provision. Funding requirements for residential projects, again, are tied to the size of the project. Projects between 10 and 20 units are required to contribute 1/2 of 1% of their development costs to the arts fund. Projects with more than 20 units are required to contribute 1% to the art fund, and then any residential projects with building costs exceeding $10 million have requirement to contribute 1%, or they have the option of providing onsite publicly accessible art in lieu of the contribution to the fund. So those are the funding provisions. The other key provision relates to procedures, and the draft ordinance requires the crafting of implementation guidelines, which address a number of important issues, such as the process for selecting, citing, relocating, and removing public art, procedures for project-specific publicly accessible art on, in private projects in lieu of the contribution, procedures for waiving the ordinance, requirements to verify compliance with the ordinance. The implementation guidelines are to be developed by a public arts Subcommittee appointed by the Park and Recreation Commission, and would be subject to City Council review and approval. I think those are some of the key provisions. The Planning Commission did consider the draft ordinance as well in an advisory capacity, since this isn't a zoning code amendment, they don't have any legal authority over it, and they endorsed the draft ordinance, they suggested one change to the language, specifically that Section 15.85.06A be modified to read the selection of public art pieces. They basically suggested that the process for juriing not be written into the ordinance, not embedded in the ordinance, rather that should be worked through in the implementation guidelines, as opposed to putting in the ordinance. They thought that would provide the city the optimal flexibility in terms of developing a selection process that fits the city, not tying your hands by establishing it within the ordinance, so that was their suggestion. They also suggested, or requested, that they have the opportunity to participate in any citing procedures, you know, as part of that implementation guideline, so those are the Planning Commission's suggested changes, which are not reflected in the version you have in front of you, but in the text of this report, so you can, I think, follow what was requested. Lastly, Councilmember Lou did have some comments and suggestions on the draft ordinance, and a redlined version, I believe, was made available both to the public and to the council this evening, reflecting a number of those suggested changes. With that, staff's recommending that the council introduce Ordinance 588 per the redline revision. That concludes staff's comments. I wasn't involved in the Park and Recreation Commission's deliberations and consideration of this ordinance, but Stuart was, so, you know, any questions regarding that, I'd refer to him, so, thank you.
We also have Commissioner Lentz and then former Commissioner Fryer here, who worked on in the Subcommittee.
So would, we like to, do we have any staff questions? You have questions for staff, Laurie?
Well, I did submit a number of questions, and my comments were incorporated into the redline, so I can explain those if you'd like, and provide, maybe I have one more question. So, just going through it in order, in Section 15.85.020, just for clarification, to add the word city before council, and then on page two, Section 15.85.040, Section B, I would like to suggest adding the word private in addition to public property, so that the fund can be used for any art installations that would be on not just public property, but also private property, if the developer, owner of the private property doesn't want to put it on their property, if they're, you know, doing a project, but if they want to pay the in lieu fees to the fund, then those fees can be used to put any public art on any other existing buildings, such as if we wanted to use it for a mural or an other installation on any other existing private property, I thought that this would allow more flexibility. Then following section, Sections 15.85.050, I would suggest adding just this phrase in an amount equal to, just to clarify that the contributions would not be part of their development cost, but it would be an amount that would equal a certain percentage of their development costs. And, those are all of the comments that I had that were made. Another additional question that I came up with, that actually Beth Grossman had brought up through a letter that she sent us, was what about having to make sure that this sent us, was what about having to make sure that this applies not just to, to existing projects, but also to any renovations? And I did look to make sure that it says that it does apply to both new projects and building alterations or additions. But that is, language is only in the section dealing with commercial projects. And it is not in the section on residential or public developments. So, that's one further change that I think we might want to consider to, to add a line saying that it applies to both new projects and building alterations or additions. Okay? And, and those were all the questions I had.
Yeah, I have a question. So, John, so the, the planning commission made a recommendation. Again, the commission felt the fourth company implementation guidelines are the appropriate venue to establish their, the appropriate selection process for Brisbane. And ordinance should not limit the city's flexibility in this regard. What, I know that you didn't put their recommendation in the, in the ordinance. What is your feelings about that in, in that position that they had taken?
Well, the discussion, and there were, again, some of the same members of the subcommittee and the Park and Rec Commission didn't, I won't speak for them, but at the meeting, there was no objection to the change that was suggested. In terms of where it goes, I just wanted to get it out in front of you. Since the, the planning commission didn't really have the typical authority they have in, as a zoning ordinance case, I didn't want them necessarily to, I didn't want to introduce that in over the Park and Recreation Commission's work product as part of that draft. That's the only reason I didn't include it in. I just wanted to put it out there for your consideration. And it, again, it seemed to be non-objectionable to the Park and Rec Commission members present.
Okay. In your opinion, do you think it's a, a good point?
I think the idea that a jury of this particular sort of composition, you know, may, maybe that's not the best situation for every art piece you'd be considering. So, the idea that there's flexibility in the implementation guidelines, or there's a range of choices that might be used, maybe some pieces are of such citywide significance, you know, there would be, a different process might be appropriate. So, the idea of locking a process in by ordinance, you know, again, is, does limit everybody's flexibility down the road.
Okay, all right. And, you know, I know that Kevin Fryer is here. And, you know, when he gets a chance to speak, you know, I'm gonna ask him about that. So, all right. That was the only question I have for staff.
Right?
Yeah, I have a couple of minor modifications I'll bring up at the appropriate time. But I do have one question for the city attorney. And that has to do with the, the waiver of conditions, fifteen eighty-five oh seventy. That strikes me as pretty all-encompassing, and maybe more all-encompassing than we need. I think, you know, when we get through the implementation, we may decide to, you know, to waive some things under some circumstances. But this seems so absolute and so all-encompassing, that it almost is a, could basically override the entire ordinance. And so, I'm wondering if I'm reading that correctly, and is that a valid concern on my part?
I think it's a legitimate concern. I think the idea that the guidelines are going to come back to you, and I think in the guidelines, it may indicate in there which provisions would be subject to waiver and certain ones that perhaps wouldn't. I think once those guidelines are developed, the council can take a look at those and decide whether or not the exception is going to swallow the rule. And if that were the case, then you might want to modify that. But I think it would be fair to give the committee an opportunity to decide in the first instance to recommend about whether certain provisions be waived or not. If, in the absence of those guidelines, I would agree with you that it would be too open-ended to say everything could be waived. But I think the guidelines will, will put some, some parameters around that.
Okay, thanks. So, that becomes another question to you all, to see what you think about that.
And I had one que, one clarification that I would like to have. And we have a lot of, of things that aren't included in the building development costs, that are, are excluded. And typically, those items, including landscape renovations, pipelines, but the, actually, that's the wrong, I apologize, that's the wrong paragraph. On the development costs, what are included? And it seems that a lot of what the development is, the labor to do the developments, aren't included in the, in the costs, are exempted. And so, what is the amount of a project that would really be covered by this typically? Do we know? And that's a long-winded way of not having a question for you.
Again, the, I think the, the, the costs that have been captured are sort of typically the costs that show up on building permit valuations. Because, you know, again, there's certain fees are based on building valuation. And, you know, that's really the intent, is to follow a system that's already in place. Because I think the difficulty of trying to capture some of these other sunk, sunken costs, is for somebody to actually implement that, to, to, to track down some of these underlying costs of land acquisition, et cetera, et cetera, becomes really onerous on the part of the city to validate those. Because that's something we don't do as part of our normal course of business, is issuing a building permit.
So, this is based on an established protocol?
Yes.
For building permits or for, for taxation purposes?
Mm-hmm.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I, pro, pro temp mayor, I do have another question if you may ask.
Okay, of course.
So, you know, I highlighted under commercial projects, fifteen point eight five point zero five zero. And council member Lou acknowledged that, that the commercial projects could be new or alterations, additions. So, before the council will be seven thousand Marina. Does that project, will that project be affected by this ordinance with what they're, they're planning to do based upon what, what is before us right now?
I suspect there's a timing question. I'll defer.
It would be a timing question, but assuming this ordinance was in effect at the time that the building permits were pulled for that project, my interpretation would be that it would be subject to this, because it would be a building alteration of some, of some magnitude. And so, assuming that it fell within the parameters of the one million to five million, or in excess of five million, it would seem to me that it would be applicable.
All right. And let me give you a follow-up question. So, say, someone does a project to the outside, and maybe the costs are four million dollars. Then, they come back with another permit, and they want to do the inside. And those costs are at three million dollars. So, now you really have a seven million dollar project. But you, you've submitted two sets of plans, you got these two use permits. How does that work into something like this?
Yeah, it would, you know, if, I think if there was a thought that the, the project developer were phasing it in order to avoid this.
I don't think, no, I'm not saying that they would do it to avoid this.
You'd think it just coincided.
They're just phasing it because that's what they want to do.
It would seem to me, under those circumstances, you would apply the, the fee to the amount of the building permit. So, if it was four million one time, and then three million, you would look at it within that, the smaller parameter, rather than a seven million dollar project.
I mean, I think, working with the Recreation Commission, the answer would be, is that both would fall under the less than five million, and the money would be for the city, for the public arts fund in the city. If they had done it as a combined one, then they would have the opportunity to have worked on a project themselves for their thing, for their building. So, I mean, this dollar amount is the same, because on, you know, between one and five million is one percent, over five million is one percent. So, the ultimate dollar amount that will be part for the public arts is the same. It will just end up being the process for determining how that money will be used may be different.
Okay. Well, all right. Now, I'm just, you know, well, okay, so we have one million as the, as the five million dollars?
Right. The one to five is that it would be an in lieu of contribution.
Okay.
And above five, they had, would have the choice of doing it in lieu of, or doing art of that value on their prop, for their property.
Okay, that's right. And we don't have anything that's above one percent?
Correct.
Okay, then. All right. Thanks.
Yes.
This question then raises another question in my mind. It, it doesn't say specifically when it gets imposed. You know, there are some things in the ordinance that say, okay, if you've already applied, you have an application in the process, you know, additional requirements wouldn't apply. And there are other things that say, okay, it's at the time of the building permit. And, you know, there are other points along the stage that you could pick for identifying, okay, when does this come into effect? But I don't think it says anywhere in here exactly. Am I missing it?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking in section three of fifteen eight five oh five oh. Section three says, "Compliance with provisions of section fifteen eight five oh five of O.A. shall be demonstrated by the owner or developer prior to the issuance of a building permit as follows." I, I think that was what the Parks and Recreation Commission and the city attorney at the time were thinking of when that would, when that would be imposed.
So, give me that reference again?
Section three, under the fifteen eight five oh five oh. And it says, "Compliance with the provisions of section fifteen point eight five oh five oh A shall be demonstrated by the owner or developer prior to the issuance of a building permit as follows. A, payment of the full amount of the in lieu contribution, or B, written proof to the building department of a contractual agreement to commission or purchase and to install the requested art on the development site." And then, it goes on to speak a little bit more. But I think what it is, it's prior to the issuance of the building permit, they would need to satisfy this condition.
So, I guess, I didn't read that the same way you just did. And so, I guess it's a matter of how you read things. The, the way I read it, that was a place where you really checked whether they'd done it or not, not at the point of actual imposition or non-imposition. In other words, I didn't quite read into it what, what you're saying. I, I sort of took it as a indicator of whether they're actually fulfilling their responsibility. And the way you check that is, you know, before you issue the building permit. It's a way of controlling it. But I didn't get the clear impression that it's saying that, you know, they're subject to it until they issue the building permit. Maybe.
Oh, you're asking a different question than I'm answering.
Yes.
So, okay. So, your question isn't, if we've, if this gets passed, when do we collect the money, if that's the way it's doing? Because we will collect the money prior to the issuance of the building permit. I think, so the different ques, let me rephrase your question, so I can understand it. Your question is, if somebody's in the process now, at what point in time would this ordinance affect them?
Right.
And so, your question is, does it affect them all the way up until the time that we issue a building permit? Or does, or if they've already started a process of some kind, does it no longer affect them?
Right. That's my question, exactly.
That'll turn over to the attorney.
It, it seems to me that since the trigger here is the issuance of the building permit, that until the city has issued the building permit, the project is going to be subject, if they, the building, if they, if they have a building permit, they're not going to be subject to this ordinance if it becomes effective. If, if the city has not issued a building permit before the effective date of this, then they would.
Now, the reason that that's kind of interesting is because, you know, you have projects that get approved, and, you know, start doing things on the ground, and, and then, you know, the building permit expires, right? And then, they come back in a couple of years later and say, okay, we're ready to go again. Does that mean they're now subject to this ordinance?
My answer would be yes.
They're not gonna like that. Yeah.
Well, that's what happened with.
Okay, no, I just wanted to know what, you know, what the expectation is here. Just to make it clear, you know, what, what business developers are, are having to, to deal with.
There, and certainly, if you have such an, an agreement, like a development agreement, that might trump something like this, it says, we will only pay, pay the fees that are in effect at the time that the development agreement was entered into.
Right.
That's going to, obviously, that creates a vested right as well.
Development agreement would override this, of course.
Because it creates vested rights.
Right.
The same way the building permit in your typical kind of development creates a vested right.
Right. But they expire.
If a development agreement expires.
I mean, a building permit.
Both, yeah.
True.
Agreement could expire too, but usually it's for a longer period of time.
But generally, again, depending on how the development agreement is written.
Right.
Most times, they do provide that, to the extent that you have, if there are new fees or new obligations that are enacted after the effective date of the development agreement, those will not be imposed on that property owner.
Right.
That's the general rule.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make it clear.
Right. And as you recall, with, with, with the recent case that we had with eight Thomas and the Ridgeline ordinance, it was a, wasn't it, a permit, a design permit that expired?
Right.
And then, they had to comply with the new Ridgeline ordinance. So, same situation.
Yeah. No, I, I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly. Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I did actually have one other question that I had raised, which I just wanted to point out. I had asked staff, well, what happens if, if art is installed and then the building is sold? Is there any requirement that, you know, runs with, with the property that it be maintained? You know, what if this new owner wants to take it down? And the response I got was that that would be put in the implementation guidelines. So, I'm, I'm, I'm taking that to mean that there's some way then, is there some way to legally require the owner of the property to keep this, the art on site?
Typically, the, the ones that I have seen on these items, typically, the guidelines will provide that there will be an agreement entered into between the city and the property owner, that'll set forth what the maintenance obligations are, so that, and that document would be recorded, so that any subsequent owner of the property knows that there's a maintenance obligation that goes along with the, the art.
Okay, thank you.
So, we've got a couple slips of people who want to speak. And we'll start with Karen Lentz.
Good evening. Karen Lentz, six one one Humboldt Road, Park and Rec Commissioner. I just wanted to thank you all for taking a look at this ordinance. It is the culmination of two years of work for Parks and Recreation. And we, we did our homework. We, as you know, Kevin Fryer and I are both very thorough. And we looked at a lot of ordinances from other neighboring and beyond Bay Area cities. And we're very careful to examine the language carefully and work with the city attorney. We had a great deal of help from Stuart. It was fantastic. And I just wanted to remind the public that the ordinance is just the beginning. If we pass the ordinance, that then we go into the process of working with the public. It's a public process to create the implementation guidelines. And that is just as important as the ordinance. And to answer your question about the planning commission and the change they made, we were there and we worked together on that change. And we agreed it was a good one, because their point was that the jury process and figuring out how that would work, it, that's an important, it's important for that to be part of the public process, for the public to have a buy-in, an understanding of who exactly will be involved, because that is such a, a large part of, of how this becomes successfully implemented. So, just wanted to give you a little back. So, just wanted to give you a little background that that's, that we came upon that together and we agreed that that was an excellent recommendation from planning. And thank you, Councilmember Lou, for your careful prusal of the ordinance, and I think that your recommendations are excellent and really improve it. So, I just want to thank all of you, and I know that the Parks and Recreation Commission would all be very excited if we could pass this ordinance, and rest assured that we will work hard to make sure those implementation guidelines are sound.
Thank you. Do you want to follow up on Karen's comments because I have another slip from a different speaker? Come on up, Kevin.
Good evening, members of, honorable members of the council. I'm Kevin Fryer, Brisbane resident, and I worked with, with Karen on this. I was on the commission at the time. And I wanted to first of all, thank also Bonnie Boligoff, who was on that subcommittee, as well as Stuart, who was really very responsive to the things we asked for. We asked, we asked to look at a lot of other cities' public arts ordinances and, and implementation guidelines so that we could educate ourselves. And also, he was a good foil. He sometimes played devil's advocate in those meetings and really made us think through. I mean, you know, we had to learn about this as we went through the process. It's also very exciting for me to see this go through further vetting. And Lori, I know you had some, some additions to it, good points. Beth Grossman, I had a long conversation with her last night. I think she saw some small things that can be improved. And of course, the, the recommendation that came from the, the planning commission, we both agreed with entirely, and that's about not, not locking into, into the ordinance various ways that we might go through with the implementation, that that really belonged more on the implementation side of it. I just wanted to, to make a couple of points for the, for the people out there listening because I realize now that I understand it really well, sometimes I'll get in a conversation and I'll think, well, how can you not know that? But of course, when we started out, we didn't know that. One of them is that this is not a tax on people. This does not tax our citizen. This is not that if you're a homeowner, you're going to find an, an arts ordinance. And that seems so apparent to me, but, but maybe not, public arts ordinance. It is a, a fee that's attached to development. Also, if you put an addition on your house, that's not going to trigger this. This is not designed to, to trigger fees attached to homeowners if they make a major renovation. There are, are floor limits written into it, below which it applies to nobody. And then the last bit is, this really is, and I know this has been discussed a lot, this really is a two-part process. One is this ordinance, which we are looking at and considering to pass. And the other is the implementation guidelines, which is a big, large project, needs lots of public input. That's the part where the public decides, how are we going to, how are we going to spend this money when we get it? How are we going to decide what we want for our community, for art? It should be a big, robust, raucous, and wonderful debate about what we want for our community. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin.
Our next slip is from Dana Dilworth.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Mayor and Councilmembers. Now, for an entirely different point of view, the problem with this ordinance is that it ties public art to development, and it sets the honor system as to be the, the, the way that you evaluate the funding mechanism. And for taxation purposes, I'm not the only person who thinks this way, people are inclined not to tell the truth. So, they, the, any figure reported is bound to be lowballed and result in an underfunded and, in this case, an intermittent revenue stream. A financing mechanism used in other cities like San Francisco to fund public art is to use a percentage of the hotel taxes. Hotel taxes are a steady and predictable revenue stream. Visitors' fees should be earmarked to improve locations near the hotels and to support an art campaign throughout the town. And it could be like San Francisco's heart competition where everywhere you were in San Francisco, there'd be this big, beautiful heart done in hundreds of different ways. It could be like Montana's bison sculptures. Everywhere you turn in Montana, there's a bison in a public square, and they're all different. Some are colorful, some are rusty, some are, you know, pop art, some are very realistic. And the sculptures in Alaska, the salmon sculptures. We might choose a star, perch, perchance. But to wait for the one day that a project is deemed sufficiently done to transfer the goods to the public, which has been a 25-year wait on the Northeast Ridge, I don't know why that this is the only way that you perceive we can fund art. Why would it be any different for us to maybe never even see the promised public benefit of this program? Because you have city staff determining whether something's been met, whether a condition has been met. I agreed with Lori that the fifteen eighty-five thirty B, in that line, it only mentions new private developments and that later on in fifty, under Private Developments Commercial one A, it mentions both new projects and building alterations and additions. And for continuity, you should correct that. Thirty, eighty-five thirty B excludes transportation improvement projects. Why? Why are you excluding transportation projects since you are deeming that Brisbane will be the transportation hub to connect Daly City and San Francisco? Do you want all of the transportation areas to be dull, dead space? Have you ever seen the animated pictures on the walls of the South San Francisco BART station? Why would you have this provision that says transportation doesn't have to contribute to the art? What about bus stops? We've already had a situation where a public, our city employee did not even consider art in the bus stops. So, that provision makes no sense. Under fifteen eighty-five forty, I think that the provision should state that the revenue that we do collect should draw interest. So, the art fund ends up being interest-free to its, to the city? I, I find that hard. All projects, I believe, should have the right to have art on site, although I do understand the, the desire. And then on fifteen eighty-five fifty-two D, what is modified housing? Is there a legal definition of modified housing? Because I, I just would like to know what, what, what that thing is, modified housing. Regarding the implementation guidelines, A, I do not think that city personnel should be in the selecting process. I believe it should be community chosen or that Brisbane residents and Brisbane business owners should ha, be on the selection committee. And I'd like to remind you of, what is it, the Michael Graves? I want to say Peter Graves, but Michael Graves situation where the city went full head with one...
Architect.
Architect that, or one design without any public open process. Or, actually, I wasn't here, so I can't say that, but it was turmoil in the town, and Councilmember Miller can attest to that. So, I hope you reconsider this Yahoo developer-driven ordinance to something that will actually produce public art program. And rather than have a wait-and-see, maybe ordinance, that maybe we'll have public art, maybe not, I would like it to be something that is predictable and not have this waiver, iffy room space. Because right now, I'm trying to grade kids on their art, and I know how difficult it is to say whether art is good or art is bad. Because it is a subjective thing, and you don't want to stop the process, but you do want to be respectful of everybody's ability to produce art. And that's a very fine line to walk, and I'm hating it, it's grading period. So, thank you. I just, I wouldn't want to be the judge because the, the, the whole gamut is so remarkable, the, the kinds of choices that we could make in this town. But I do want to see public art, and I'm saddened that when we put a new bridge in our town, all we got was a star medallion. There was such opportunity there, and I want to make sure that in the future, we take hold of those opportunities and implement, literally implement something, not just a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Let's see, so, oh, I'm sorry, do I have any other members of the public that have not put in a slip and would like to speak? Tom?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I think this is a great concept, but it shouldn't be tied to development. We keep saying there's no land available to build. So, no land available, no development. No development, no art. I realize the implementation phase will come later, but I want to plant some seeds now, seeds for thought. I'm absolutely against any city staff being on the selection siting committee. Look what happened with the BB CAG. That was supposed to be a citizens committee, and it became a majority of city staff. I don't trust staff, and I don't trust the planning department. Look at the mediocre architecture they accepted for Opus on Sierra Point, against a lot of public opinion. So, I recommend that the committee, if it were to have, say, five members, that three of them be artists, or at least in that three to five ratio. And I see in this fund that they, there's money for materials and supplies, but no mention of artist fees. So, you're, you're going to say that the artist doesn't get paid? And I think the building permit issuance should be the trigger. Otherwise, Opus and the biotech campus on Sierra Point will not have to comply. And those are two big projects. Thank you.
Cliff, you said you had another question for staff?
Yeah, so, so John, so tonight, the recommendation is for the city council to introduce the ordinance. So, then, the, you know, the suggestions that came from Councilmember Lou and the suggestion from Beth Grossman and the, and the recommendation that came from the planning commission that the Park and Rec Commission has agreed to, when that comes back to us, those things will be implemented into the final.
Second reading, yes.
Second reading, okay. All right, great, thank you.
Any other comments?
So, I think we have agreement on the implementation guidelines, number A. And instead of the language which is there now, would be something like just the process for selecting public art, which leaves it pretty open. And then you can, you know, set up any kind of committee you want, any composition you want, any sequence or process, you know, that's, leaves it open enough to, to whatever. So, that's kind of my suggestion for dealing with that issue, and I think everyone seems to agree that that, that's a good idea. No one mentioned, but I'm going to bring it up again, is fifteen eighty-five seventy, the, the total waiver of everything. And I would like to propose we just delete that section and then go with E under implementation guidelines. But there, it just says the process for waiving, and I would say the process and specifications for waiving the provisions in this chapter. That way, you get, get both what the city attorney was talking about. And then it leaves it up to the implementation committee to decide, okay, so what can you waive and what do you not want to waive? You might not want to waive the, you know, the funding process. So, anyway, that's a, a third idea on my part. And then I wanted to raise something that's come up in a couple of other venues and just to see how people respond. Y'all might want to come back into this. And that is, you know, who should be on this implementation committee? You know, who's going to put all this together and answer all these issues? And the proposal is that it's a subcommittee of Parks and Rec Commission. But I can imagine it being a broader committee than that, so at least I would like to have a discussion as to whether we should stick with what's proposed or whether we should have a, a committee that maybe is composed, you know, certainly Park and Rec, but also, you know, planning as an issue has a role in this in a way, even though it's not a partisan ordinance, it certainly is a part of the planning process where you put the art and what you do on, with various buildings and so forth, that is a part of the planning process. So, it seemed to me that the planning commission has some kind of interest in this. And then if we like the way in which some of the committees we have are working, like the Sustainability Committee or the Joint Facilities Committee between Park and Rec and the council, you know, then it might even make sense to have a, a council member involved, which would certainly expedite matters because then you have all the parties, you know, working on these implementation guidelines, which of course is, as they always say, you know, it's in the, it's the detail that counts. And this, I, anyway, I just wanted to raise this, just let people talk about it, and maybe they already have spoken about it and, and they've come down to a conclusion. But I wanted to at least have a conversation about that idea and, and see what people felt about it.
I agree with, with your thoughts on how to make it, to have it broader. I think it definitely, the way I read it was that it was appointed by the Parks and Rec Commission, but it wasn't going to be made up of, you know, two Park and Rec Commissioners, but that it would be broader than that, and that maybe wouldn't even include Park and Rec Commissioners. I mean, it seems like that might be appropriate, but not, not necessary or not required. So, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, just looking at who's been involved in this process so far is a good indication of probably a lot of the people who would like to be involved in that subcommittee. So, I, I don't see any, I, I see that it would be beneficial to keep it as broad as possible and, you know, bring in planning if they're interested and any members of the public who might be able to also lend their expertise. And I think keeping, also having a member of the city council would, would be good to help the communication flow.
You know, we have, you know, just looking at that fifteen point eight five point zero six zero, and it says, "These implementation guidelines shall include," and shall means that that's, that these, these things are going to be in here. And so, you know, it should be replaced with may include. And, and I don't know, I'm not an expert in these things, and so, I, but I, I would like, you know, for, for the folks that have been working on this to see whether or not it should be may or it should be, you know, stay with shall. You know, do you want to have flexibility? Who knows what, you know, how people think about the art process 20 years from now? Maybe it's different, you know? Of course, you can always change it too, but, yeah, so just be thinking about that. Of course, you can always change it too, but um, yeah, so just be thinking about that.
I think that um we're sort of looking at needing two groups moving forward with this. One would be the implementation committee that is going to design some of the rules and guidelines that are going to go into effect. And once that's happened, um, a public art subcommittee that probably would be similar to our complete streets and safety, you know, a, a, a group of people that the council um takes application for, from concerned citizens that want to be involved in the public art process. And so I think we're looking at two different things
Yes.
um that we're going to need moving forward, once there's hopefully money in the system. And the other thing that I would like to see added into this would be um a secondary source of funding where we can impose at this point uh an ordinance that, that brings in uh development tied money. But I think if we had some sort of mechanism written in that we also look for other su- funding sources and other funds to contribute so that we do have an ongoing stream of revenue. And if that can be put in as a, a goal as a, as a way to uh have a secondary funding source in the ordinance. Um, so it's not just limited to um funds coming from a developer. It's always possible that in a budget, the city council um in an upcoming budget could make an allocation to support the fund um to provide maintenance or to provide um seed money, so to speak, for a project. Or gap funding for a project. But if we could have something written into this that we're also looking for different funding sources, is that possible?
The ordinance does provide that the, there's going to be a public art fund that's, that will receive in lieu contributions, donations and other funds contributed in support of the Art in Public Places program.
Yeah.
So it, it is pretty wide open in terms of uh of the availability of, of where those funds come from. Presumably, that means that, you know, the council could make a budgetary decision to put money in there and the ordinance currently requires it. We could certainly make it more specific if you would like, but there is certainly, it isn't just limited to uh the in lieu contributions as currently written.
So that would have to be something that, you know, if, if the council were to want to fund it, it would come as a, as a council appropriation.
And we do have an arts subcommittee too, Lori and, yeah, aren't you on the arts subcommittee? Or we have an arts, uh, we, we have an arts subcommittee, don't we?
Well, that was the subcommittee that helped look at this ordinance.
I thought we had a, when we.
You have a council, well, that's the council liaison to the, to the Parks Recreation Commission, but.
Hmm, I thought that there was a, I thought there was a body that the council is on that, that looks at art, uh, like the art, the artist of the year award, things like that. We do have an arts subcommittee, I used to be on it, so, yeah. So.
Perhaps that was an ad hoc committee.
I don't think so, Seppi and I were on it and then.
I think you got together annually to go over the, the arts advocate of the year.
Arts advocate of the year, yes.
And then the, the.
And Beth Grossman and, and.
Mayor's achievement, thank you.
Mr. Fryer uh would, would come and help us out with Wendy.
So are you currently on that?
I don't think so, I thought Lori is on it now, but uh, I guess we could.
If I am, I haven't yet worked on it, but I'd be happy to.
It wasn't very active, so.
But I was, but the last time the council considered this, I was then, um, you know, by my request, put on a subcommittee or participated in the subcommittee that looked at a, an earlier draft of this ordinance. That might have been just an ad hoc committee. I think Mr. Fryer might have a comment.
Yes, Kevin does have a comment. He's out there waving.
Yes, yes, I wanted to, I wanted to go back a couple ticks and talk about a, a point that you brought up, um, Ray. And also, the council does have an arts subcommittee. It's, you are on it.
Okay, great.
Clark is on it. And we met with our subcommittee from the uh Parks and Rec Commission. It was one of the last things that I did and we talked about this ordinance, we went through it. And at that time, you know, the, the whole um um implementation side is kind of this big wild, wild west about what we'll do at this point. But one of the things that, one of the points that I made is that, that we as a community should have a very robust discussion about the implementation policy. It should include stakeholders, I guess we call them. It should include people from the arts community, from the environmental community, from the, from the business community, uh and so on. And we spoke about the, the idea of, of looking into seeing whether we could get a grant that would help to pay for facilitator for, you know, a community workshop on this issue. And in fact, we do have a grant in the works at the moment. Uh, and I don't know, we'll hear back from it and Caroline knows a little bit. Yeah, first week of October. Uh, she called us in, us being our, a reconstitution of the um uh public arts subcommittee. And we looked at the language and, and helped her to, to draft the language for it. Maybe we'll get it, maybe we don't. But I do think that, uh, to your point, Ray, it does really need a, a, a robust discussion. Not just what the community wants, but also a little bit of, of education about what pu- public art is and what it can be. For a lot of people, we think about public art as, okay, boom, here's a statue in the middle of, in the middle of the town square. And it can be that, that could be really great. There are, there are much easier things to understand, like murals, for example. That's a really easy and accessible uh addition to community. There are sort of more subtle things like skateable public art in, in, on skateboard parks, for example, where public art is, is incorporated into that. There's also uh environmental public art, landscaped public art that, that addresses e- environment, which is a subject I don't know a lot about, but I know it's out there. And I think that having some public forums where, where we have this exchange about what it can do, what its potential is for the community. And then also in return, what the community is interested in. And from those discussions, what's, what's the best way for us to, to um, to do this implementation? Write these implementation guidelines. And the last point I would make about the implementation guidelines and the reason we're putting a lot of the nitty gritty decision making onto that side of the equation, we don't want it like section A in the ordinance, is that that's an easy thing to change and we are gonna make mistakes as we get, as this gets underway. And we want to be able to, hopefully not big mistakes, but we want to be able to learn as we go along and make adjustments to that implementation guidelines as we kind of feel our way uh through several processes of, of selecting public art for our community.
Mm-hmm.
So I hope that clears up a whole bunch of things.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, yeah. So I think we've got things in place. We've got a arts subcommittee, we've got folks from Park and Rec. And um, you know, I think they, they'll, they'll come up with a good recommendation for us, how to expand that, that, that group. Get some other folks from the community involved.
So um I was just looking at E, you know, the public arts subcommittee and maybe if we put something there to, to describe it as, as broadly representative subcommittee, something like that, sort of consistent with what you just said. And then I think um we need to talk a little bit about uh Beth Grossman's idea that, you know, the, the whole business of shouldn't, you know, renovated, remodeled properties, not just commercial, but otherwise also be included. And I think there are probably some reasons why it's applied to commercial and not residential. And I think we should probably talk about that a little to make that clear. Am I right about that?
I, I think part of the reasoning was that what you'd get on a, a building permit for maintaining, say, a multifamily residential property may not actually increase the, the, the value of the property or increase the number of units. You know, you could be talking about permits for maintenance. And so the question is, do you want to charge a fee on, on maintenance items for those kind of projects? Or do you want to only require it for residential if you're adding units? That's something for you to think about, but that, that would be, I think, one of the issues. Different than a commercial space where if someone's doing a tenant improvement, they're increasing the value, there's a new tenant coming in. And it's a very different situation than permits for maintaining residential, even an apartment project or.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought too, was the reason for that. But I think it's still open to discussion as to. And Lori, you brought it up, so I just wanted to make sure that we didn't move on without sort of coming to closure on that.
Yeah.
Especially now that Beth is here.
Yeah, it's interesting you bring that up, uh, Ray. So, you know, I'm just thinking of, you know, in the Northeast Ridge and there was the issues with the siding and all that extra work that had to be done. I don't know what the cost for um repairing the, the faulty um weatherproofing. But um if something like that occurred
Significant.
Would that then fall under something like this, it would, correct?
If you were to require for any permits, alterations to existing, yes, it would.
Okay. So, you know, I mean, I, I think for us making it consistent, this makes sense.
I don't see why we can't just um have an exception for, you know, permits related to maintenance. And so that it's, it could still include any um permits for residential projects that are for actual renovations that are not related to maintenance. Because we already have all these other exceptions in fifteen eighty-five thirty. So, why don't we just add maintenance?
I just wanted to suggest that if you're, if you want to define, or if you want to add maintenance, we're gonna have to define it.
Right.
And that could get a little tricky.
Right.
So I, I, if you would like us to look at that on a staff level, we could look at that and pres- um suggest some language for you. But I think we would have to have a pretty tight definition of what maintenance meant.
Hmm. So what if we just made the document consistent with all the different types of, of development? So the resident, so we have it in the commercial and we just made residential, like was suggested by Beth Grossman? Is that, are there any issues with that?
John might have a better sense.
Well, you can do that, it, it raises the question I just brought up though, because then your example of the permits for the ridge, that would, as written, it wouldn't trigger that.
It would not trigger.
And if you modify it as you're suggesting, it would trigger that.
Would.
So it's really your choice.
Yeah.
It seems like quite a burden to put on a um, a group of homeowners um that need to replace the siding because
It did come down to them, I mean, yeah.
That, that most of the time, I mean, other than it was a construction defect lawsuit, um, that would be borne by the residents and would increase their probably unexpected um dues. And would, would be a burden.
Um, you're right. I mean, originally, I, I think the homeowners thought that the developer was going to pay for it. And then ultimately, in the end, they paid some, but the homeowners then had to pay. And sure, you wouldn't want to put any burden on homeowners and they're already paying for a loss that they didn't expect to have. So um, I, you know, this is something you brought up and so it just sparked the question. But, you know, I, I'm fine with, with how it is, if you want to keep it simple.
I mean, if you were to, to say maintenance issues, then if you brought up, say, the, the Marina Building that is planning to remodel, are they considering doing the exterior shell a maintenance issue? And would they say that they're getting a permit to do maintenance issues? To avoid, um, so I think maybe not defining it is defining, not defining ma- maintenance would be a better route to keep it excluded.
Well, I'd be curious to see what other cities that have these ordinances have done. Can we have staff look into?
We, we did and this is very similar, this is similar to, I don't know, we looked at maybe twenty different ordinances and this is, you know, we, I think we modeled it mostly uh after Emeryville. But we looked at twenty different ones, including San Francisco's, which is the same basic idea of one percent for arts based on development. Um, and they all have this kind of exclusion. Because the concern that you get to is if you're doing, as, you know, we've been talking about, maintenance on a single family owner, what, what's the trigger that you would do? And, you know, are you trying to put the burden on people who already live here or people who are moving in? And I think what the conversation we were having at the subcommittee is that we were really looking at businesses, um, when they're doing a re- ma- major remodels, it's probably for new business. When you're looking at, you know, new, new development, it's for new businesses. And we were really trying to um lower the burden on existing residential. And that was, I think that was the rationale that the subcommittee looked at. And as I said, we looked at probably close to twenty different ordinances and this is very similar to all of them. We looked at them from, throughout the country as well.
All right, I'm fine with leaving it as is.
So um, Beth, I see you came in late. Did you want to make a comment um to the council?
That's okay.
But um I, so I just wanted to say that I also agree. I don't think that in a situation like with the Northeast Ridge, that the burden should go on the homeowners. But I'm also worried about people using the maintenance or renovation as a way to avoid it. And so the, what I was thinking about mostly would be somebody who might take one of the ex- existing buildings and want to turn it into Livework or, you know, nicer office space or whatever they want to do. And then they would call it a renovation. And so I didn't see in the ordinance that there was any mention of, of renovation. So when you say leave as is, does that mean that we're not gonna call out the idea of renovation?
For, for commercial business, there is that in there already for, it's either new or remodel.
New or remodel, okay.
Or commercial, it's just not for residential.
Okay. So what if it was a situ- so if it was like um another company came in and bought existing townhomes then and wanted to remodel them and, you know, like completely as a new thing? Uh, would that, in the event, I mean, eventually the Brookfield Homes are gonna be, get run down and need to have full remodels. Would that kick it in then?
Those are all owned individually though.
They're all owned individual?
Yes.
Oh, okay, at this point then that, it's, okay. So it wouldn't be a situation where a corporation would come in, okay. Um, and then the, I don't know if you addressed the other questions that I, I had yet.
I didn't get a printed list of your questions, but.
There's just two more. Um, one is, I was just wondering if we can address how the collection of funds would be regulated? Um, would we um collect the arts funds, for example, with, with the permits before the project begins? Or would we let the project go on and withhold the certificate of occupancy or something like that? Um, uh, if the funds are not collected or the public arts project um is not completed as promised? So how, how would we, is, I think that that might be something we might want to put in an ordinance.
And Beth, I apologize for this. It's, actually it says in the ordinance that we would get it at the time of the building permit.
Oh, okay.
So I apologize, when you and I talked about it, I, I skipped over that part.
Okay.
So I apologize for that.
Okay, great. And um, and then the other thing too was just that um I do a lot of looking at public art in cities everywhere that I go. And um, I'll take one example, is Seoul, Korea has this huge public art program. And what's really evident is that they do these fabulous buildings and then at the last minute, the builder will go like, oh, you wanted a sculpture, okay, here. And they'll like throw it on the sidewalk and then you've got like plop art. So what I would like to have is some kind of mechanism, and I don't know if this would go in the ordinance or in the implementation, that um, that an artist would be hired right in the beginning to really work the public art component into the design so that it would really be in, integrated and thought through rather than a sort of an, an afterthought of some kind of, you know, assignment that they have to complete. So I, I'm not sure um whether that would best fit in the implementation or in the ordinance. But we, we could run into a real problem with that kind of thing and end up with a lot of plop art sculptures, which is that we definitely don't want. Or somebody going like, oh, we didn't do that, okay, throw up a mural here, you know, like that kind of thing, rather than thinking, what is the site? Who is this community? How can we create uh public art that's gonna really contribute to the sense of place, the sense of identity, to telling a story? Um, to really being something that we all care about and are proud of. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
Good suggestions.
I think on the, when we talk about family resident, the, the in lieu or on-site, that those, that the, the selection of the art should be approved by the, whether it's in lieu or, if it's on-site, it should be approved by the, whatever the subcommittee that we end up having.
Yeah, right.
So that it is appropriate to the site. And it seems to be something that would be addressed in the implementation guidelines.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what we're gonna, yeah, give the flexibility to that.
Yeah, no, I, yeah?
Yes.
I, I totally agree with what you just said, you know, that the art needs to be integrated in a community value sense, and not just, as you say, plop down as an afterthought. But I think that's something that needs to be addressed in the implementation guidelines. And it should be, and probably what I think about how to incorporate it in the, in the planning process. And, you know, we have various examples of that already, so I think we can build that in. So, I think just about everybody here at the attorney agrees with that. But we have to make sure it happens.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had asked staff, was, you know, how do we actually make sure that the, that a subcommittee of some sort is gonna be reviewing it before it gets selected? But, you know, in looking at these, the section about the implementation guidelines, it says that this body will then look at the selection and the installation, but it doesn't say anything about the location or site. And that, I think, might be something we want to add in, maybe the, the, the location and selection of public art pieces. Just so that also we, you know, would have, that this, that the, whatever committee has created, subcommittee would have the ability to also select where it goes, not, if it's on private property.
Yeah. I, I have a feeling these guidelines are gonna be longer than just a 80.
Yeah, it, yeah.
But you're gonna be on that committee, so you'll make sure it happens. All right.
So, do we want to move forward with?
Well, let me just, I was just gonna go through, I hope maybe Councilmember Liu can help me, because she's got a lot of language stuff here too. If we could kind of go through, I suppose the city attorney is gonna be addressing the language changes here. You know, we've made a number of, you know, suggested changes, just to make sure that, you know, we got them all down. And, you know, one of which is the whole series of suggestions that have been written down by Laura, so Laura Liu. So, that's, that's clear. And then, in E, under 1585-30, we were gonna have the public art subcommittee would be broadly representative. And then, A, under 1585-60, and I think I liked that last suggestion in the process for selecting and locating public art. And then, E, under that same section, and we're talking about the process and specifications for waiving. And then, we delete 1585-70. Anything else?
Just before we eliminate that, that waiver of conditions, is that what you're recommending, Michael?
That's what the, that's what I heard, yeah.
I, I just want to get clarification on that.
That's what I'm saying.
I think, I mean, I think that's, I think that's fine to waive it, I mean, to waive it, to delete that section here, because you're going to address it with the guidelines.
Implementation guidelines, okay.
Doesn't hurt to delete.
All right.
Right.
All right. And then, and then there was the wordage, the recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah, well, I incorporated that.
Did you? Okay.
Right. Because I think everybody agreed to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, is that your motion?
Yeah, it is.
I'll say again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is it second? Who was second?
I did.
Okay, great, thanks.
Aye.
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 So, aye, yeah.
So, the motion carries?
All right.
And I just want to say thank you to all the people who work so tirelessly on this process, especially Kevin Fryer. It's been, it's been great to see the community come together, and Karen Lentz as well, and the entire PNR, the entire subcommittee. And I'm really, I'm looking forward to this getting into place and having a, a way to get more public art in Brisbane. And I think it'll be a really wonderful addition to the community.
Great job, you guys. Thank you.
So, I think we are going to take our, Caroline, to take our presentation from Caroline out of order.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just start, and then Caroline will, will get into this. We had a meeting of the council's subcommittee on economic development, and they wanted to come forward tonight to present a recommended format and discussion points for the economic development workshop. We do need to most likely reset that date, September 30th, there is a conflict. And also, I strongly suspect the mayor would not be available to attend that, on that date. The, there is an also, well, I'll get to it in a moment. So, the subcommittee, which is Councilmembers Lentz and Liu, met on December 10th to discuss the upcoming workshop. We looked at the potential of discussing three different zones. There's more than that in, in Brisbane in terms of our economic zones, but we wanted to focus on three of them. One is the Crocker Park slash Brisbane Village. The second is the downtown Brisbane slash Visitation Avenue, and the third was Sierra Point. A point was raised by Councilmember Miller earlier today, whether it would be appropriate to have a discussion about Sierra Point prior to the actual appeal on the 7,000 Marina. I haven't had a chance to talk in any detail with the city attorney about that. So, I think we would probably like to have an opportunity to, to talk subsequent to this meeting about that. And again, I'm not sure what the timing's gonna be. I'm not sure whether this workshop's gonna come first or whether the appeal's gonna come first. So, that's also a detail that needs to be determined. There are other zones that, as I've indicated, that the committee did not feel we should be the focus at this time, because frankly, the development opportunities or lack of opportunities in that, those areas. The format would be somewhat informal, would be a workshop format that, like we do for our annual council goal setting, which is around tables here in the council meeting room. And that we would also invite in the ULI TAP panelists to just go through the Crocker Park TAP, Technical Advisory Plan that they put together earlier this year. And the, also, that the subcommittee was working on the development of an overall mission statement for the economic development program. And to assist in the meeting, they will, will kind of bring that forward, as well as reviewing the provisions of the 1994 general plan. As you recall, when we talked about an economic development plan, and actually, the council approved one, I think, I don't know, a year and a half ago, something of that nature. We talked a lot of that in that particular plan in that evening, about the fact that there is already a set of goals and objectives in the, in the general plan, and that we wanted to build upon those and kind of use that, as opposed to reinventing the wheel there. So, subsequent to our meeting, had a conversation with, with Councilmember Lentz, in which he thought it might be useful for the city to reach out to the community through various social media opportunities that we have, to solicit input from the, of the public. That's not something that we've really done before, but I thought it might be kind of an interesting opportunity to do it in this, in this context. I don't see, you know, a lot of downside to it. This is obviously a workshop, the, more for kind of discussion and formulating thoughts and ideas, as opposed to making, you know, final policy decisions. So, the input might be, might be very helpful. Obviously, you may also receive public input that evening from the public showing up as, as they normally did. So, I've asked Caroline to put together a presentation for you that would kind of demonstrate what, how we might approach this social media outreach effort. And so, if it's okay with the mayor and the council, I'll have Caroline make that presentation. You can ask questions, and we can go from there.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and council members. I wanted to show you the platform that I consider to be the best tool to garner public feedback, and that is through UserVoice. And you may recall, I've been forwarding you comments that have been submitted through UserVoice, which is delineated by a red Public Forum and Feedback tab, which is located on every single page of our website, brisbaneca.org. And so, clicking upon that, you come up with a pop-up window that has various ideas that have been submitted by residents. And going to browse ideas, there's an introduction of what UserVoice is, and that we were setting this up, we actually set UserVoice up a few years ago with the debut of the new city's website, to just get ideas about the layout and look and feel of the website. We used it for the community park playground and getting design suggestions. And honestly, recently, it's been a repository of various ideas that have been submitted, as you can see. And the thing with UserVoice is that it allows you to, you can either register, or you can do this anonymously, but to vote on various ideas that you see that have been submitted already. If you see something that you like, you can vote up to three votes. And as you vote, then those ideas percolate up to the top. As you can see, the number one idea here is to work to have compost bins available for city residents. And it's got 10 comments. So, there's a number of ideas here, and the power of UserVoice is that the more popular or the ones that have the most traction with members of the community go to the top. And then, the ones that, you know, have less votes are on the bottom. And when I first was asked by Clay to look at how to set this up, I thought, "Well, why don't I just create a, an idea myself, economic development ideas, and have that be where people can submit comments?" However, with just considering this more today, I thought, so, well, what we have right now is just that a date is still being worked out, but soon, the city council will be having an economic development workshop to get the council's vision as it relates to economic development in Brisbane. The following questions will be asked of council during the workshop, but we'd like to hear your thoughts as well. What do you like? What do you think should be enhanced? What things in the past do you think should be brought back? What things are missing from town, and what things do you not want to see in Brisbane? And then, I thought, well, the power of UserVoice is being able to vote on various ideas. And so, I thought that because a forum only allows for basically one major or main forum to exist at one time, which is basically turned into a catch-all of ideas with comments, I thought that we could archive the current UserVoice forum. I would print out everything, and including the comments, make sure that those that are responded to are closed out. And also, those that are still open ideas are forwarded to the appropriate subcommittees or staff so that they could be just completed. And then, turn this forum into basically the economic development forum so that ideas, as they are suggested, can be voted on. And the ones that are most popular will trickle to the top, because right now, with the current parameters, we can only have comments under an idea. And so, I thought with approval of the council and allowing me to just close up the current forum ideas and making sure that those comments are given to the appropriate staff and committee members, subcommittee members, that that could be a way to select, or rather, garner the feedback for the economic development workshop. And also, we could just have the forum be linked to our Facebook page. So, there is a City of Brisbane Facebook page. It's just facebook.com/brisbane94005. And this would be a, a way to link the forum and give us a brief description so that people can be directed directly there and begin to suggest their ideas regarding economic development, and not have to search and scroll through the various ideas to get to that one idea and then comment. So, I thought that would be the best way to see, you know, what are the most popular ideas? And you can review that at your workshop. And we also have a Twitter account too, where we could tweet out that link as well to the community and use all of our other communication channels, our television channel to post a slide, and also our signboard, of course, and our city newsletter and publication. As we may have a few weeks at least to be able to have time to get that feedback for you. So, I will take any questions if you have or want to give me approval to move forward.
I have one question for you. What would be the reason to go with three votes per person on liking a topic?
There's, you mean, for someone to give a reason for why they're giving one versus?
You're emailing, you get to vote once, twice, or three times.
This is a function of the software. So, when we first did this software, we were looking for a way to get, you know, to do this. And people have up to 10 votes. So, what they wanted to do with the software is to create an ability for somebody who really likes something, to be able to really like it. If you just averagely like it, you vote two. If you just kind of like it, you vote one. And each person who has a registered, you get 10 votes per topic. So, you can vote on a mul, you can vote up to 10 topics on one vote. Or if you really want to push something to the top, you vote it three times. And it's a function of how the software works. And that was, I think, the rationale of the software.
And you get 10 votes per?
Per topic. So, this would be like, economic development would be a topic. So, let's say you have a suggestion that, you know, we would like to have a pharmacy in town. You have a suggestion that we should do a facade upgrade on visitation. You have a suggestion, reorient the village to Bayshore. And you have like, of multiple ideas like that. Then you come in, and you look at all these ideas, and then you would sit there and say, "Okay, I really, really like the pharmacy. I'll give that three votes." You know, the Bayshore, it's kind of one of those things, "Oh, you know, it's okay. I'll give it a vote. This one, I don't like at all. I'm not gonna vote for it." So, ultimately, what you get is that idea that, I think people can push ideas to the topic that's really important to them. And then, you get a sense of, as council members and as a community, is what are those issues that are really burning issues in the community, versus those that are kind of average in the community? And it's a function of the software, is what it is.
I, I understand the concept now. I didn't know there was a limit on votes when she had originally talked about it.
I think you can sign in as multiple people at some point, too.
Would, would we want to be directing what the ideas are? Because do we really, I mean, a lot of things we've talked about, and they aren't economically feasible to, there isn't population to support certain things. And we keep hearing those over and over brought in to the conversation that, you know, whether it's a high school, or a shopping center, or a grocery store, or a pharmacy, we'd need X amount of people to make a go of that. And so, are we looking to get what our population wants? Or do we want feedback on ideas that are feasible?
Well, I think we should keep it as broad as possible, because, you know, affordable housing could be something that somebody wants to encourage economic development. And that could then potentially drive the numbers up to make it possible to have some of those amenities. So, I think we, at this point, you know, we should keep it as open as possible so that people can make suggestions, and, you know, then we can drill down later on the details and the feasibility. But right now, this is more of a brainstorming.
So, the, so what we would want to direct for staff to do is to make this, where there's no ideas posted on it, that they're all fresh ideas coming in. That someone, that the public is creating the comment that people would then vote on.
That's the way I, I think it's been described.
Yeah, you don't want to have any restrictions.
Yeah, you don't want to have any restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, it's a legitimate point. I mean, you could either do this now and get information from people that's kind of unvarnished prior to the workshop, or you could have a workshop and kind of have the council kind of whittle through where you really think the focus ought to be, and then get input from that. Or you could do both, actually. I think, building on what Lori said, it's just, this is just kind of a, you know, a, one of the broad sweep that, you know, where there, it's really uncensored, unparalleled, and everything, right? Just whatever.
A visioning workshop.
Yeah, and even though this is coming from the economic development subcommittee, you know, people might think, okay, economic development, that means, you know, some kind of commercial thing. You know, it's to raise revenue for the city. And that, that isn't all that what economic development is. You know, economic development could be some kind of civic thing that spurs, you know, creativity and enjoyment in the community. It's all, it's all part of it. So it could be, you know, and maybe we do talk about a new library or we talk about a place for artists. We don't have an artist gallery in town. And those things actually bring people to your town and they spend money. This is, you know, it's connected. And so, so going through this exercise of using social media, it's something that we haven't really utilized in a, in a, in a major way before. And so it's like, okay, let's try this experiment. Let's see what input that we can get from folks who, say, perhaps can't come to our, our meetings. You know, or it's people that, that want to provide input to the community, but they really can only do it on the weekend. Or they, they do it at midnight when they, you know, when they have time. And so we want to hear from those people. And in leaving it open like this, it just gives us that, that, that opportunity to hear all points of view and find out, you know, what is the pulse of the community? What is the direction that we'd like to see? And also from, from our council members. Ultimately, in the end, it's about empowering. And, and so empowering the council, empowering the community, and that being the, you know, what helps drive the, the future of our town.
I, for one, am not a social media person. And I think that a lot of our residents aren't, so, but it will be a good, I don't know if it would be a broad enough pulse of our community to see, you know, who answers on social media and say that that's representative of our community, but it certainly would be, it could be representative of our social media savvy community.
Well, that's just one way they can contribute their ideas. Of course, people are welcome to come in person to the meeting or provide any public comments. But I'm wondering, Caroline, have we considered, you know, it's an interesting idea to use UserVoice for this and to kind of, you know, take everything off and start afresh. But what happens if somebody wants to then post a, a comment that's not related to economic development? Just, you know, some other idea or some concern they have about something happening in the city or some complaint or whatever, you know, that, that can't be stopped or, you know, that'll still be out there. And have we compared this interface to Facebook and using the city's Facebook page for this function?
I did think about Facebook, too. We have, I mean, fifty-five likes on our Facebook page. I didn't think that it was a wide enough, maybe, population to just put the forum or have people comment on there. I just wasn't as comfortable as the city's website to get to the forum. Thought maybe.
Maybe we could even do both.
Oh, yeah, and just called everything together.
Yeah, because, I mean, a lot of people do use Facebook in Brisbane. I'm on the residents' Facebook page, and there's a lot of discussion that goes on there. I think that they're just not looking on the city's Facebook page because it, you know, to date maybe hasn't been as robust and interactive. So this could be, really be a way to people, to drive people to that website, to that Facebook page.
Yeah, you had a good idea to just let the residents of Brisbane Facebook page know that this Facebook page exists so that we can, yeah, get more feedback on this page as well. Yeah, we can do both.
And again, we may rue the day we ever started down this path.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm just saying we could rue the day we ever started down this path.
I'm just having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. That's because I don't have my.
Okay. So do we want to give direction to the staff to proceed with this?
I would like to.
I'm not a social media type either. So the concern that, that I, I think it's fine to let people, you know, weigh in and give ideas and so forth. I mean, I certainly have no objection to that. The, the part of it that I'm wondering, well, there are two parts of it that I'm wondering about. One is there's, we have to be careful about, you know, giving implicit promises that we're actually going to try to do something about all the ideas that come up because a very high percentage of them, as the Mayor Protam said, is just not going to be feasible, you know? And then they're going to wonder, well, they're not responsive to my idea, you know? Well, hey, you know, there's no money for that, you know, kind of thing. And so I'm a little bit concerned about the way it's set up and overpromising. You know, it's good to have a whole lot of ideas, but that doesn't mean that, you know, anything's going to come of them, and it's not that we're ignoring them. It's just that they're just not feasible in light of, you know, circumstances and finance and what private developers are willing to do, you know, et cetera, et cetera. There are a lot of constraints, and that doesn't, doesn't always come up in these kind of conversations. And then the other thing that, that is kind of a straitjacket on us, you know, people would like to have, you know, kind of quote, "official response." And they're not going to get any response from the council members on social media because it's prohibited by law. And so we have this problem in that, you know, there's all this input. And then people say, so what does the council think about it, you know? And where's the feedback? And how realistic is this? And, you know, there's not going to be anything there for many of us because we can't. At least that's the instruction that all our previous city attorneys gave us. And if we get new instructions, we'll find out, but that, that's the way it is now. And so I'm, these are just concerns that I have. That doesn't mean we shouldn't go ahead and try this experimentally, but, but I think we have to recognize that there are limitations.
If I may respond to one point you made, you know, true, we can't respond on social media, but if, if somebody does post an idea that we would like to comment on or, you know, communicate with them on, there's nothing, I believe, that prohibits us from directly reaching out to them individually. And either by email or, or in person or on the phone, you know, we can, we can call or contact that person as long as we don't just post to Facebook or to social media. And that then complies with the Brown Act and all of that. That's my understanding.
I, I think ultimately what you do is when you finish the process of going through this with economic development and you go through the city council, you know, through the council process, I mean, what you're, what we're trying to do is just get more ideas into the hopper. And I, and I agree with Councilmember Miller and Councilmember Lou, is what you need to do at, at some point is circle back with all the ideas and explain, you know, how those ideas were, were dealt with, you know? Maybe some of them, you're right, we don't have enough population. Maybe some of them have been explored and we've been turned down. But I think what, ultimately what you, what we need to do in order to create, can finish the dialogue is when the city council's finished its process, is to really publicize how we went through the process and how, and then going back on these kinds of forums, letting people know, here's, here's, here's how it ended up. Because I think what people will really want to know, to have that sense, that they're being heard. And I agree with you on, on that. And the way they get to be heard, we may not always agree with people, but at least we heard it and here's how come we're responding the way we are. And I think that will be an important part of this. And that gives other, that will help us in the future when people say, they never, they never responded. Why am I going to do that again? You know, we need to, if we're going to do, put this effort in, we're going to need to put the effort in to respond, you know, back on Facebook, back on UserVoice, you know, back in the newsletter probably, in multiple ways, so people know that these ideas have been heard. And it's not the city council, but from the compilation, staff will be able to do that.
And also.
You know, the goal was to, to, to capture all that data. And so that it's a tool for us when we have our, our workshop instead of just coming in and, and providing our suggestions to these things. But, you know, being able to, you know, get some feedback. And then, of course, you know, we haven't really talked about during the workshop how we would also use feedback from, from folks who would attend. So I'll need to kind of work that out. But, you know, really, it's just, it's for the council to, to be able to, to understand information that's out there. What are some of the things that, that we like? And, you know, just going off that list. And then, and then being able to, to do some kind of feasibility study. If there is something that we really like, say it's the library, then, then we, we dig in, we go into the weeds with, with the community and figure out what type of, of library we want, what type of library that makes sense. This is really just to get things out on the table and see what direction we as a council would like to go. And you can't do everything. I mean, it's impossible. But you should be able to, from doing an exercise like this, create a list of priorities. Ultimately, that's what you want to do. So then you can do stuff instead of, you know, continue to talk about things. And maybe it takes a long time to get those things done.
And I wanted to add that UserVoice has the capability to have a status update. So for instance, on the idea that had the most number of votes, there was a status that I had posted back in 2012, June, that this was planned. And so it is emailed, the status is emailed to everyone who either votes on the idea or, of course, the person who suggests it, if they include their email. And after, maybe after the economic development workshop takes place and there's been a discussion of the various ideas that have come forward, then I could make a status update so that the people who made those votes and gave their opinion could have some kind of just closure to know that their idea was heard and what was the conclusion of it.
And if I might, we make one more suggestion that, when I'm thinking about the Facebook page, the city's Facebook page, we might want to look at what is going on with the skate park Facebook page. I think that, that Spawn Ranch said that they were going to be soliciting input from people on the design through Facebook. I haven't looked at the, their site, but they might have a good format set up for soliciting ideas. And it's, of course, a different topic, but just, you know, it's another, it's, it's another model to look at.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
I guess I, I'm in favor of experimentation, so let's, you know, let's try it. And my concerns still stand, and, and I have an additional concern. And that is when we put out the status or we respond in some way. I think it's important that the council has, and I'm not quite sure how we do this legally, Mr. Attorney. The council has some kind of role in that, so they're comfortable that, you know, what's going out there is actually reflective of what the council thinks. Because after all, we're the, you know, representative decision-making body. So it gets tricky because, you know, you don't, you know, the way I'm hearing it, it's kind of like, you know, turning it over to staff. And in a way, because of the legal prohibitions, it makes kind of sense to do that. But on the other way, on the other hand, that essentially, you know, takes away our ultimately responsible role in terms of responding to the citizens. So, you know, maybe it's a question to the city attorney. How, how do we deal with all these kind of contradictory elements here that we're trying to merge together? At least that's how I see it.
If I'm understanding the process correctly, what will happen is there's going to be this workshop at which a number of different ideas are going to be vetted, including the ones that'll be on the, the social media page. My sense of it is that coming out of that committee workshop, the information will be brought forth to the city council in some respect. And through that process, there would be, you know, some ideas are going to go forward. Some may not be able to go forward because they're not feasible or, or whatever. And based on the input that the city council gives, then the staff can respond accordingly to those people who have participated in the social media. So I think, I think that the council will be able to weigh in on ultimately what is the disposition of these ideas, although staff will be carrying it out. So I think both, you know, both sides of this will be, will be taken care of.
Yeah, just to amplify on that, I mean, the, certainly the desire, I think, of the subcommittee and certainly on the staff level, and it may take, you know, the workshop and then coming back to city council and a future meeting, and it may, this, all this may take time because I think there's a number of items that the council may send the staff off to do analysis and research and, and further study on before they ultimately make a decision whether they want to move forward and try to do certain things. So, but we're, what I'm hoping for, and I think the subcommittee agrees with this, is that we can, we can finally get very focused on a small number of things that we want to pursue. The problem with our economic development effort to date, in my opinion, is that we have been too broad and too all over the map in terms of our, our various efforts. We have a lot of great ideas, and we need to get focused and decide where we want to put our time and effort to. And to some extent, what you see tonight on the, the items that, in terms of the economic zones, was the kind of the first effort to say, okay, we're not going to look at the entire town. We're going to focus on three different areas where we think we might have, be able to have an impact. And even in that discussion, when you get down to it, there may be one or those zones that, you know, you say, you know, look at, there's, there's really little we can do to impact that and, and we're going to focus on these other, these other two zones. And, you know, ultimately, within those two zones, okay, here's the specific projects we really want to do. We want to put together, you know, a precise plan to deal with the village shopping center and the, and the affordable, or in the housing element. Is it just an example? There may be other things. So, you know, I'm hoping out of this that we get very, very focused. And, and then ultimately, that's a council, city council decision, and that gets communicated to the public as that. And, you know, we have, you know, all the various processes that we do to, to implement various things, which include, you know, public hearings and all sorts of stuff.
Thank you, Clay.
I'm hoping.
And so while we are, so we, we want to direct, we have to open up the website and the survey forum that's through our website and develop through Facebook page, if feasible, to get feedback on the residents' wish list of economic development ideas. And we also want to make sure the staff's very cautious on any replies or commitments that are implied through response to that website. And do we also want to discuss the possible dates for the workshop date change at this time?
Yeah, the city clerk's got some options for you to consider. So it should be in front of you. The dates that we suggested were October 21st or 28th, although the ULI team would not be available at that, during October, or Monday, November 3rd, or Monday, November 17th.
Yeah, I think it's important that ULI is, is at our meeting because they, they can best describe the, the plan that they have prepared than, you know, than anybody else. And so I, I'm open for one of the Mondays in November. If we can do it the 3rd, at least it's sooner.
Um, didn't, didn't Eric Conway have a problem with Monday meetings?
Yeah, I, I, you know, Sherry and I are just talking here that he, he seemed to be more concerned about council meetings as opposed to a workshop, but.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, he seemed to be more concerned about council meetings as opposed to, you know, something like this would be a workshop. But I could certainly check with him to make sure that he's comfortable with a Monday.
I, I would prefer, I, while I don't have my calendar with me, I would prefer the November third date, if it works for others, as a tentative scheduling. Just because I think November seventeenth, we're getting into the holidays or close to the Thanksgiving holidays. And although I'm not sure where it lands this year because I'm, don't have my calendar.
It's the following week.
But, and just to note, not that it, I don't think it concerns any of you, but, um, the, the following day is Election Day.
I didn't notice that.
I don't think it concerns any of us particularly.
In the past, we had council people who worked the Election Day, so, but not, I don't believe any of you do that.
Um, so, I mean, that would be my recommendation if we can, uh, firm up that date with, um, once I look at my calendar and, and the others get a chance to.
We'll have a tentative March, November third.
Okay.
Okay.
And that would be a seven thirty meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thanks, Caroline. Now you can go home and be with your baby.
No, you can't. Nope.
So because we're, um, not looking at item B, oh no, item A, new business. The co-sponsorship for the Friends of Brisbane Library Chamber Concert Series, Live at Mission Blue. Staff report.
Yeah, this is the, uh, annual, um, Live at Mission Blue series. And, um, the Friends of, Consider, or Rashley approved the Friends of the Brisbane Libraries Chamber Concert Series, I guess is it's now called. And, um, the various dates are there and the event financial consideration of eleven thousand dollars. Um, various, um, items dealing with stages and risers and waivers of deposits. Um, I believe Kevin is here and if he can, I think you did want to speak to this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's good to be here again, speaking in front of the Honorable City Council. For those who don't know me, uh, I'm Kevin Fryer and I am the Artist Director of Live at Mission Blue. I just wanted to start out by saying, we, we were, we had this long discussion about public arts. We actually do have a policy in place for performing arts. And that is the co-sponsorship, uh, program. Without the co-sponsorship program, we would not have many wonderful performing arts, um, in civic events in this community. And of course, Live at Mission Blue is one that benefits greatly from it. Uh, this year, this will be our eleventh season. And I thought I would just go through and let you know what's in the, in, in years past, we've gone through, this has just gone through the consent calendar. But I kind of like to come up and, 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 you know, let you in on what, uh, what it is that we're doing. It's also an opportunity for the community to see what Live at Mission Blue is about for those who don't attend. And I have a very short, uh, slide presentation, which is draft pages from this, uh, from the brochure, which we're working on currently. And then I'll use that to go through the different programs that we're going to do. And this year's, uh, brochure, I'm going to, I'm incorporating photographs, most of which that I've taken, they're all Brisbane-centric. As you know, I like to take pictures and I've been building a, a portfolio of Brisbane-related photographs. So, let's see, there we go. So this is the cover of the, of the brochure. It shows the four concerts that we're doing. It also shows a photograph of Visitation Valley, uh, taken from the top of San Bruno Mountain. It's a night shot. Uh, also of note, up in the right-hand corner, we, uh, we have where our sponsorship comes from. Uh, the first being Friends of Brisbane Library and we're sporting our new Friends of the Brisbane Library logo, which is an open book and then a mountain, uh, uh, above it. Then, of course, co-sponsorship, that's assuming that you do approve it tonight. Co-sponsorship by the City of Brisbane. And then the last acknowledgement is the business community, which, uh, which has supported us faithfully through, through, uh, the years. Um, then, then the first event we're going to do, and this is the, the thing we are reinstating, we are reinstating a school program. And in our early years, we used to do, uh, school programs. We would bus the children upgrade school up to Mission Blue Center. This particular photo was not taken by me, this was taken by Michael Schuman, and it's from one of our children's programs that we did, I believe, five years ago. And there's been, uh, strong interest in, in reinstating that as we build ourselves back up from the great economic downturn. Uh, and I'm very pleased to announce that we are doing that this year in collaboration with Best PTO. Best PTO is helping us with the funding, helping us considerably with the funding. They're very, uh, keen on it. I'm going to meet with the new music teacher on Monday and we'll put them in touch with the artists who are performing so that we can, um, uh, reinstate the school program. This time around, we are doing both Panorama and Brisbane Elementary. In the past, it was just Brisbane Elementary. And that is, will be on January fifteenth. Then the first concert, uh, and it's the same group that's doing the school program, will be on Saturday, the seventeenth. And this, uh, this group is, uh, what I call our emerging artist, uh, uh, program slot. Each year, I try to look for, uh, the young professionals who are coming up the ranks and, uh, give them, uh, a concert there, looking for concerts and so on. Put them side by side with, with very established, um, concerts. They need things for their resume and so on. And I've identified this group, you can see them up in the right-hand corner, Musa. They're about three, four years out of, out of the various conservatories. Uh, I've heard them twice, also in emerging artist programs, one put on by Early Music America. And the image, oh, they're going to do a, a program, they do both modern music and period music. So their, their, their program is Italian-based, uh, seventeenth, eighteenth century Italian music paired with modern composers. The image was taken in here in Brisbane and in fact, it is from the statue factory that, uh, is at Bay Shore and, uh, Industrial Way. And a couple of years back now, they let me go in there with a camera just to kind of see what I could take. And when I was putting together the program, I saw that, uh, image. I thought, well, that's just perfect for theirs. So that's the first group, they are on January seventeenth. The second group, uh, second concert is Masters of the Baroque. Uh, and this is featuring Elizabeth Blumenstock, Jung Ha Kim, who is our own Brisbane resident harpsichordist, and John Dornenberg. This will be the first time he performs here and, uh, he's an old friend of mine. Elizabeth Blumenstock, uh, performed here several times early in the series. She is the viol, she's, first of all, she is one of the world's great Baroque violinists, truly great Baroque violinist. And she is the violinist who declared the acoustics at Mission Blue one of the finest of any hall she's played in, in all of California. And she's played them all. At the end of last season, I did a, a questionnaire asking, uh, our audience members who they would like to see come back. And although Elizabeth has not performed here, I think in six or seven years, her name came up several times. So she's really well-remembered, she's very excited to be here. Uh, the image, I should make a comment about the image. It's an obvious thing to me, maybe not audience, uh, obvious to everybody. I took that in my living room. And that is the action, the, the actual action of the harpsichord that's in my living room with one jack over on the side that's actually engaging the string. Uh, the third concert is, uh, that we're bringing back. And of course, they always, uh, they, their name is always mentioned when I do question, questionnaires, is Kitka. This is the Vocal Women's Ensemble. They do, uh, ethnic music from the, from Eastern European countries. Uh, this is the fourth time we've presented them, this group. I presented more than anybody else and there's a reason because they love to perform here and the audiences loves to have them here. They're thrilled to be back. Uh, and the image for this is Mount Diablo and that is taken from the top of our own San Bruno Mountain. So it's from mountain to mountain. And then the last concert is, uh, is the Lee Trio. And Angela Lee, the cellist of this trio, she performed here, uh, two seasons ago on the Bach Chello Suite, um, uh, group. And she is part of a, of, of ensemble called the Lee Trio. I've gone to hear them twice now since then. They have a very big following in the Bay Area. I should mention their three sisters and I forget, one went to Juilliard, one went to Yale, one went to Curtis. I don't know, it's a little overachieving family. Fantastic musicians. Uh, and when I was talking to, um, to Angela about presenting them, uh, I asked them, what about adding an additional, uh, artist and doing maybe a, a quartet? They, they played the, out of the romantic trio repertoire. Let's do something from the quartet repertoire. And I suggested Jody Levitz, who also had played here on that same series. Wonderful, wonderful violist, uh, and professor at the conservatory. They liked that idea, so they are going to come and, uh, and perform the second half, this big major work, the, uh, the Brahms Piano Quartet in C minor. And that is the end of my presentation. So I hope you will consider again this year, co-sponsoring Live at Mission Blue. I've, I'm, I'm very grateful that, uh, that we've had that support. There is no way we could do a concert series here in Brisbane and utilize Mission Blue Center the way we do if we didn't have this co-sponsorship program. And I hope that you all feel we put that to good use. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. You know, the work that you do is just awesome. And, um, you know, it's one of the highlights of, of, you know, what we do here in Brisbane. And, um, I, I know that you dedicate a lot of time and energy into this effort and you do it, it's, it's, you know, just, you do it for the love of giving back to the community, uh, uh, for the arts. And, um, just thank you so much for being a great citizen.
I, I want to echo that. I, I'm now a member, a subscriber to Live at Mission Blue and I, I try to make every concert and they're all wonderful in different ways. I did have a question for you about the children's concert. You mentioned that, you know, it's going to be at BES and Panorama. I'm wondering if it will be open to students who don't attend those schools?
Uh, well, it'll be during the day and we're, we're going to bus the children up there. Uh, it is open to parents and we'll make that apparent on our website and on, uh, and on the, uh, the page for the brochure. It's not quite finished, in fact, I was still working on it this morning and it's a work in progress. I'm not sure about other kids. I, I, I suppose for homeschool kids, sure, certainly, I don't know how to reach that. I mean, what do you?
What time of day will the concert be?
Uh, so, so it will be in the morning, we haven't worked out the details. It, it will actually be three shifts. So there's three forty-five minute programs and the, the, because there's, there's a difference in those age groups in, in terms of what will, what they will relate to and what kind of information they can, they can absorb. What a fifth or sixth grader will be interested is going to be very different than a first and second grader. So my understanding in the discussions we've had, we'll do three different concerts. First, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, with a gap in between. And even as they're returning, one group, they'll be bringing the other group up.
And who, what will the, the performance be? Have you decided?
Uh, it is, it is Musa that's going to, that's doing it, which is our emerging art, artists ensemble. And they, uh, have done some school programs and they're interested in developing their school programs. So when I meet with the music teacher on Monday, um, we'll start to work out the details and then what I want to do is have the, the music teacher meet with, uh, Derek Tam, who's the harpsichordist with that ensemble and, and get those things coordinated. In part, what I'm interested to see, are there things that the, uh, that the music teacher can do in her classroom to prepare the kids for what they're going to do? And, and in the discussion and what I've learned about, about school programs, uh, the value of it is of course, what they actually learn in the event. But it's also the, the thing about going to a concert, the, 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 the process of actually going to an event, what that means, how you behave, getting them, introducing them to the idea of going to public performances, whatever their interest may, wherever their interest may go as they get older. But the value of, of, of etiquette and so on of public performances.
I think that's, that's a wonderful thing to do because, you know, I always see children at the concerts and I'm, I feel guilty that mine are not there.
I, I would, on that, on that note, I would like to say, we do have, uh, our youngest subscriber last year was in, he was in kindergarten la- last year and I understand he's really excited about this season. And he, so he's a first grader, he is our youngest subscriber. And of course, as a presenter, I love that when, when.
That's great.
Kids come. And you know, for the evening concerts, I, I realize that, that, that young, younger children sometimes fall asleep after intermission and that's fine. That, that's absolutely fine, they take what they get from it and.
Some of the older patrons do too.
The difference is younger ones don't snore.
Very true. I try, I try to program things that won't put the people, but it won't put the, everybody to sleep. But, uh, but that's true. I've been known to snooze through a few concerts in, in my day.
Well, thank you, we're looking forward to it.
Uh, any other questions that I can answer?
No, uh, as you know, I've, uh, my wife and I have been subscribers since the beginning.
It's true.
Old timers.
Yes.
Uh, and we look forward to this year again. We, we do like Kitka a lot, so we have a lot of their CDs and so forth.
Right, well, we're pleased to have them come back.
I, I just had a, a, just a couple of thoughts about, um, the, the expenses here and whether they could be, I don't know, maybe coordinated with other things. Let me just.
Sure.
Try out and try out the staff over here. I noticed that the, the lighting equipment rental is, is nine hundred dollars. And, sir, I guess my question is, over time, does it really make sense to rent it? Or should we really actually have some lighting equipment so we wouldn't have to rent it? It's just kind of a question of, you know, buying versus rental? And I have any idea what we're talking about in cost, so I just thought I'd raise that question.
Do, uh, do you want me to comment on that?
If you know, yeah, yeah.
Well, well, I think, I think that the more Mission Blue Center is utilized for performance, where, where that kind of thing comes into play, then I think that the, the more valuable that, that becomes. You know, it's just a question of, of how much use it gets, I, as a performance space. I think it's a fantastic performance space. I know, uh, we do, uh, Shakespeare, uh, San Francisco Shakespeare Festival there once a year. It's a great, it's a great performance to go to. I think that's the, the women's club that, uh, sponsors that. So, a- and, and I know over the years, through this co-sponsorship program, there have been other, uh, programs that have come and, and then, you know, not continued. And I always think about that that's fine, you know, better to try it and, and we have it for while it lasts than, and it's hard to sustain something for a long time. But I would think that would probably, you know, there'd be a function of how, how much they get used. Or if that lighting system is not used so much, then maybe it's cheaper to.
Right, yeah, I don't know, I've just, just a thought across my mind, I don't know. Were we looked into that, Stuart? No?
No, I think we've just, I mean, a lot of it's just been really one-offs. And we also, usually when we do this kind of equipment rental for lighting, there's somebody usually with the board who's helping us set it up.
So we have, we have.
Right, so the question, so the problem is, is not nine hundred dollars just for the lights, but it's also nine hundred dollars for the person who can actually point the lights, know when the lights go on, know when the lights need to be dimmed, so.
So it's the operator.
It's, right, so there's an all-in, it's an all-in cost kind of thing for that.
But there is a lighting technician that's separate here, yeah.
Right, but I also, I mean, that's just my impression is that it's, they come together. And we can check it out. I'll talk to Wendy.
Well, Wendy has looked at this in the past and, so we.
I can't hear you.
Our, our staff has looked at that issue in the past on various items up there and we, we can take another fresh look at it.
Yeah.
But we have evaluated over time whether it made sense to purchase certain things. I think the other piece of it is, is that technology changes and equipment changes and improves. And, you know, do you really want to get into a situation of trying to stay on top of that or you just rent it?
Just rent it, yeah, right. Yeah, I know, I mean, those are all the considerations.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Right. Uh, and then the other thing, just looking at the grand piano here and, you know, the nine hundred dollars. And I know that, uh, sometimes the evening of art sharing for, you know, for the city is, there have been people who would love to play the piano, but, you know, that's a pretty expensive item. I don't know whether there's any, you know, coordination and you've got your dates all set and everything. But I was thinking if we rented a piano and then there was some coordination so we could take advantage of that rental to get some other things happening as well. I don't know, just a thought. so we could take advantage of that rental to get some other things happening as well, I don't know, just a thought.
That is something I can speak a little bit to, because also in my day job, I rent out harpsichords for concerts. And for our use, and there are all different levels of piano, you know, and what's needed for one kind of performance is very different. When we go to rent a piano for the artists that we are presenting, we really want to make sure they have a very fine instrument, we go to Pro Piano. I think two seasons ago, when we presented Eric Zivian, we went down together to Pro Piano, and they had pianos lined up for him. And he played, and I listened, and we decided which one he would want. So that's a very, very high-end specific thing. And, you know, the rental for that is by day. So if you have it for a second day, and a third day, and a fourth day, you're not really going to save any money. And that is, that piano rental thing, I think we're using a modern piano now about every second or third season. So, you know, it doesn't come up so often that, you know, that's just, that's the expense that's involved in it.
Just curiosities. I knew you would know. Okay, all right, so, anyway, I think this cosponsorship is what we've done for years, and presumably we'll do again, is a great idea. I'd be willing to move approval if you want me to.
Well, I would like to make a comment first, and that's only that I truly enjoy the concerts, and it takes me a little further out of the box of music I normally go to. And I hope that everyone in Brisbane feels the opportunity to come and share that kind of music and experience something that they might not think they like or may not know. And the fact that you're bringing children in to hear some classical music, I think, is wonderful. Expose them to it. I feel I get a personal benefit by approving cosponsorship because I try to attend as many of the concerts as I can. And so I think it's a great program, and I thank you for all your hard work on that.
Well, thank you. Could I just say that you are my target audience? That audience that, I mean, I love the audience who knows exactly when to clap and when not to clap and what the pieces they're hearing. But I'm really even more interested in those people who think they might like to hear live classical music, want to try it out. And, you know, my goal always with Live at Mission Blue is to, I call it, I call it removing the recension march, taking down that, that, oh, this is so special, and you've got to know all the little secret handshake things or else, you know, or else you're not allowed through the door. I really am interested in those people like yourself, who it expands your exposure to listening to different kinds of music. So for people out there in the audience who have heard about Live at Mission Blue and have never attended, I really encourage you to come, try one. Kitka was a good one to start with. And the last bit, of course, because we have cosponsorship from the city, and we have strong support from the business community, and we get a really nice amount of small donations to help us do this, that enables us to keep the ticket prices really, really cheap. We're not raising our tickets this year. I'm really keen on not having a ticket price be a barrier to anybody to come and experiencing a wonderful evening of live music.
One other question, did you, I remember for one or two of the concerts, you worked with the local hotels in having some sort of, I think, some specials?
Yeah, yeah, that's Home with Sweets, and I have not quite collared him yet for this year. But there's a chamber mixer, I'm hoping to see him there. And he was very great to work with, and I would expect that we'll continue that.
Okay, that was great, and it was great to hear that you also were able to receive some radio coverage, and I know one of your concerts was...
Yes, well, I should say, now, I should say, because she's here in the room, last year, we hired for a steal Jennifer Busquet to help me with marketing. And she was fantastic, and my understanding is, she is going to do that again this year. We really made a good team, and it allowed us to get, it allowed me to get to, I mean, it's a big job, there's a lot of things. At the end of the day, you don't get to the bottom of the list. Having Jennifer on board to help me with that really helped me get a better handle on the marketing aspect of getting the word out.
Great.
Nice.
Yeah, it was great to be on the do list.
I'd like to make a motion, or second Ray's motion, since it's already on the floor.
So Ray made the motion, and Lori seconded, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
So that moves us on to Item C. Considering formation of a new financing authority between the City of Brisbane and the Guadalupe Valley Water District in order to assist in the financing of future city projects.
Do you want to have a little break at some point?
We can, would you like to do that now?
Seems like a good time.
Okay.
Doesn't it?
Five minutes.
Take a five-minute break?